Would you all please rise and join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today is September 25th. This is our regular meeting of the Monroe Town Council. All members of council are present this evening as is our first selectman. We have just the approval of the minutes from last week in the voting record on our consent calendar. Are there any comments to the consent calendar? Any objections? Absent any objection, I will pass the consent calendar. Moving on to communications, there are only three. I'd ask that they be incorporated into the minutes as set forth on our agenda. Moving on to public participation. Is there any member in the public at this time who wishes to participate in public participation? Ms. Aguilar, if you would come forward.
I take her a few minutes.
Painfully come forward and state your name and address on the record. Take your time.
Jen Aguilar, A-G-U-I-L-A-R. Yeah. Thirty-two. Surry, S-U-R-R-E-Y. Lane. I'm here regarding item nine C on tonight's agenda. I'd like to address the fact that this is even on your agenda. As far as I can go back, I've looked in past and I can't find that you, as a council, have ever supported a state budget, nor are you required to do so. There are flaws in both, as we all know, there are flaws in both the Republican and the Democrat budget. Instead of the blame and gloating, our reps should be working together to get the best of both to benefit the entire state. It seems to me this is not the charge for the town council but for our state rep. There is no impact this quote-unquote approval will make in what happens in Hartford. We as citizens have and should send emails to whomever we would like to do what we believe in. I ask by the council approving this budget, what is the gain in that? I urge my fellow Democrats not to support this resolution regardless of your thoughts on the current budget, as it in no way reflects on you as a council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Anyone else wish to speak in public participation at this time? All right, seeing none, I will close public participation. We have no appointments this evening. We'll move on to the action items. A is the Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters. Mr. Pellis?
Yes, my first report is on the Monroe Board of Education met on September 18, 2017. Following the call to order and pledge of allegiance, the Chair reported on the current budget of the state. There'll be a blood drive at Massacre High School on September 28. Superintendent Batista reported on his meeting with Southern Fairfield County Superintendent's Association Cooperative, during which areas superintendents agreed to look at ways to cut expenses by collaborating on operations and services expense by joining and contracting together where money can be saved. Superintendent Batista also gave an example of special education. Transportations could be shared there. Superintendent Batista reported that the Saturday morning conversation held at the library was a success. Gabby de Blazi reported that the Stephanie Booth Project is near completion with a walk-through scheduled for October 4th. Insurance claims through August were higher than last year. Assistant Superintendent Zamary reported that the district did not receive the 2018 Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Secondary Supplemental Enhancement Grant as anticipated. Under new business, the Board approved motions to approve Massacre High School early release for Capstone, to establish and appoint members to a superintendent's search committee, and to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the MAA for an off-year teacher early retirement incentive. The Board reviewed for the first-time proposals for additional curriculum, instructional materials, and resources for Grade 11 through 12, world languages, and Grade A history/social studies. The Board also reviewed for the first-time changes to policies number 5113, 5113.2, 5114, 5125, and 5131. Finally, the Board approved a motion to add unexpendable funds of $60,000 from the 2016-2017 school operating budget to the Capital Reserve Account per state statute 10-2488, earmark $40,000 for turf field renewal, and to move $263,000 to the Medical Reserve Account pending Board of Finance approval. And if there is no Board of Finance approval, the entire $323,030 shall be moved to the Capital Reserve Account per state statute 10-248A. And then from the Board of Finance, work is being done on a policy on asset proposal. EMS has an old ambulance, for example, how do they get rid of it with the assets that have gone, let's see, beyond their useful life? Departments don't have the right to sell anything without the Board of Finance blessing, so they're going to write, the Board of Finance will write a financial policy, and then it'll come to us, the council. And the Board of Ed we just discussed. And then the audit is finishing, the auditors are finishing up. There was no EMS, let's see, committee and no Board of Health. And the finance, not the Finance Supply Department Chief Daven had reported to me there were no meetings for the Fire Department. So that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pellis. Moving on to item B is the Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works, and Parks and Recreation Matters. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting, I do know that Frank Cooper is still progressing with all of the items that are on my last report. What I would like to report today is that we did receive how AT&amp;T intends to go forward with the cow over in the Jockey Hollow area. So that will be on the agenda for our next meeting. I'll make sure we handle that in quick order, and we'll report back to you in the next council meeting.
Great, thank you very much. Just for the record, I did receive communication from Ms. Bombaro and Mr. Babrick in the Selectments Office who got in the permanent facility and referred to Mr. Reed as the Chairman of his subcommittee. So thank you for taking that on so quickly.
Just a reminder of Restaurant Week is coming up.
There you go. Thank you very much. Moving on to item C is the Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. There was a meeting scheduled this evening. Mr. O'Rourke had an emergency work obligation, so was not able to make that meeting, nor this council meeting, and that meeting was canceled. The meeting will be rescheduled for this week or next week to continue to review the inter-local waste agreement amongst the other matters that were also being reviewed. In addition, again, Mr. Babrick's office, hard at work today, was, did refer a matter regarding the senior, basically rehabilitating the kitchen pursuant to recommendations and suggestions from the Health Department to bring that facility into compliance. It was represented that the Senior Center is eager to get that project moving forward as it was of extreme benefit to the members of the Senior Center. And so we have, again, referred that matter to LNA for very quick action. Should be on our council agenda for the next meeting. The intention is to use the William Wilton funds to complete that project, and as members of council may be aware, one of the conditions of utilizing those funds is approval from the Board of Finance and the Town Council. I know Mr. Manjus is also putting on his agenda as well, so thank you, Mr. Babrick, for that. Moving on to...
Can I just ask you?
Sure.
Will that come to LNA first?
It was referred to LNA, it will be on our agenda.
Okay, thanks.
Item D is Strategic Planning Committee. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee did not meet since our last meeting. We have the item from, that I reported at our last meeting that is still with our town attorneys who are awaiting feedback on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, E, as I've stated, we're almost able to remove the EMS facility work group from our agenda, but it has completed its task. The EMS building committee documentation is with the town attorney as well, has been reviewed by LNA, so that should be ready shortly, our next meeting or potentially the meeting after. Moving on to the first selectman's update, Mr. Babrick?
Yes, in front of you you'll see a press release just put out right before this meeting. Mosquito trapped in road test positive west aisle. I want to get this to you for your reading before you heard about it in the news tomorrow. But I want to thank Nancy Broughton for staying on top of this. As you see, it was just trapped on the 8th, and the state came through on the 25th and put this out. And I think it's pretty self-explanatory what needs to do, so happy that we have a health district that has gotten information to us so quickly. As far as this resolution calling for the support, at first, I have to admit, I wasn't quite happy with it. I shared some concerns about officially documenting it in writing, but then I thought about something that Ben Barnes said the other day at a cost meeting, as you know, I'm a board member, go up and hear him. And I was pretty dismayed when he kept calling it a Republican budget, a Republican budget. And I have to actually praise the people who went across the aisle, because I think that's what needs to be done in this budget. And even the governor, I think, is going back and forth on how he's going to do it. And I think sending a message, which I've been asking, and as has JPR State Rep and other people, to call these legislators, I think it's a strong message that we are sending to the governor. I read it through, and, you know, it's something that I think has to be done, because the more people who tell this governor that listen to the people voted, it'd be like me sitting there and overriding what you do on councils and putting back money. Once you have a body voting for you, and it was bipartisan, doesn't matter how many, but they did come across the aisle and joined us, and we should be thankful for them, and I think we should all support this and send it to the governor with our blessings.
Thank you, Mr. Babrick.
I have a question.
Sure.
Just for the record, we have one person missing from the council tonight.
Oh, yeah, that's right, thank you. That was your question?
Yeah, I thought the minutes were going to reflect that we were all here when there's one.
I appreciate your correction. Your correction, so thank you very much. Mr. O'Rourke is not here. He sits so close to me, I didn't even notice he wasn't. Anything further, Mr. Babrick?
No, that'll be it.
All right. Moving on to unfinished business, Chalk Hill is status quo for the time being unless you have anything to add, Mr. Babrick.
Not for the record.
The fire study, we've, I've been updated on the fire study last time. Mr. Kellogg did update us on the status report, which is essentially that there were a number of submissions that were to be reviewed by...
Anticipated.
Anticipated.
Yeah, I believe this week the bids will be received, the deadline.
Okay. Anything further to report on that?
No.
Okay. Anybody have questions, discussion on that? No. Okay, moving on to the new business, the GBR interlocal recycling.
I'm sorry, there is one question. Do we know when the bid will be discussed? I think it's the 29th that it's going to be open.
My understanding is speaking to Chairman O'Hara is that his intention is to simply have the bids open that day, but schedule a subsequent meeting for discussion that has not been scheduled.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further? All right, moving on to new business, the GBR interlocal recycling agreement. This was the main topic for LNA this evening. At our last meeting, we asked through LNA that Mr. Reed and Mr. Nowacki just be present to give us their thoughts on the agreement itself, and just to discuss their more comprehensive review of the agreement. Unfortunately, I had to cancel that meeting, so I'm not sure that it would have been ready for a vote. Actually, I don't think it would have been ready for a vote this evening anyway, but I wanted to keep it on the agenda so that it was somewhat of a target for all of us moving forward. It's on the agenda, so would anybody like to ask me questions or discuss that night? So we should have more next meeting, and LNA will have something to report at the very least. Moving forward to item B is the Small Cities Grant Resolution for the Establishment of Bank Accounts. Mr. Pellis?
I make a motion to approve the resolution designating public depository and authorizing withdrawal of municipal public monies for the administration of the Small Cities Community Development Collap Grant Program.
Motion by Ms. Lepellis, is there a second? Second by Mr. Kellogg. For discussion purposes, we received information from Mr. Babrick by way of a memo requesting that we establish an authorization of these bank accounts can be set up. In conversing with our Finance Director, Mr. Bonowski, he reiterated what we already knew when we voted in favor of this program, we reported that the establishment of these bank accounts was simply one of the necessary conditions precedents to moving this project forward, and so that's what we're doing here. It's fairly self-explanatory. Any questions, comments? All right, call for a vote, all those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. And moving on to our last item, item C is the Resolution Concerning a Call for Support of the Legislative State Budget. Mr. Kellogg, is there a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce the following resolution calling for the support of bipartisan legislative state budget. Whereas the town of Monroe has officially incorporated municipality within the state of Connecticut, and whereas the state of Connecticut biannual budget process began in January of 2017 and was anticipated to end later than June 30th, 2017, and whereas this 2017 state budget process has included delays, unmet deadlines, and many forms of uncertainty, and whereas the governor's state funding proposals have dramatically reduced or eliminated critical state funding for our schools and other essential services, up to a $7 million reduction in state funding, and whereas the majority party legislative budget proposal included a reduction of over $2.3 million in state funding to the town of Monroe, and whereas numerous House and Senate Democrats joined legislative Republicans to pass a bipartisan legislative budget on September 16th, 2017, which fully restores aforementioned state funding to the town of Monroe, and whereas any new budget discussions will have a high probability of increased cuts to municipal aid to Monroe up to complete elimination of our state aid, and whereas continued delays in the state budget process will serve to heighten uncertainty, cause further damage to the economic climate of our community, and directly hurt Monroe's children and adults. Now therefore be it resolved if the town of Monroe endorses the bipartisan legislative budget passed by both chambers and urges in the strongest terms that Governor Dan Malloy acts swiftly to sign this budget into law.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. There's a motion by Mr. Kellogg, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Lepellis. Mr. Kellogg, discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, these are unusual times. Unusual times called for unusual measures. After eight months of inaction, I think we are, if not the one of two, perhaps the only state in the country to not have adopted our budget. Our legislature has finally passed a budget that is good for Monroe families. A budget that funds Monroe's millions in education and other state aid, a budget that has no increases to the sales tax, or the cell phone tax, no state property tax increase, and no tolls. I'm hoping that my colleagues will agree, and I think we in the town council owe it to our families to send a unified voice to Hartford, loud and clear, that this budget is good for Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Before we begin the continued discussion, I just wanted to point a few things out. Number one, I did, as Chairman of Council, send out an email inviting our Hartford contingency, Mr. Strudinsky, Representative Strudinsky, and Senators Kelly and Moore to participate in this discussion this evening. Admittedly, with short notice, I want to thank Representative Strudinsky for making the time. I know he's not feeling well, but notwithstanding that, he's out, he made himself available to discuss this with us, answer any questions that we may have. I want to, first and foremost, take the opportunity to just thank you for all your hard work. I know you spent many, many late nights up there for the last months, working hard for the time of Monroe. You keep us very, very informed, and I want to thank you for that and all of your efforts. I did, understanding the short notice, provide the opportunity via email for anybody to send comments to me, so I will continue to check my email until the end of this meeting to make sure that I represent any comments that I did receive from Senators Kelly and Moore when I first checked before the meeting, so that I did not see any emails from them. So with that, we'll continue discussion. I'll open the floor up to any comments. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions, procedurally, I guess, initially on this. Who submitted the resolution? Normally, I believe in our rules of procedure, it's supposed to be signed. This indicates no authorship. Can you help me out with that?
The resolution was a collaboration, but Mr. Kellogg spearheaded the resolution. And in fact, Mr. Kellogg was the individual who actually came up with this idea, and thought that it would be an excellent, as he stated, an excellent show of what we hope to be bipartisan support to Hartford, letting Hartford know by way of an official statement of our legislative body what our position was on this budget.
I would propose that a first started bipartisan support would have been if both sides of the aisle had had some input into this resolution. It would have been a nice way to start.
Well, that's why we're having this discussion, Ms. Martin, so you're welcome to put any input in.
Not, but there was no input then. So this resolution that we have is then essentially signed by Mr. Kellogg?
The resolution speaks for itself.
It's unsigned.
Okay, it's unsigned.
Okay, really unsigned. Traditionally, do, or procedurally, do resolutions go to LNA?
Sometimes. Is this an interrogation of me, or we just...
No, I'm just, I'm curious.
You're a member of LNA, so if you need to make a statement, please make a statement. I don't, the question and answer session is not my obligation to answer your questions as Chairman. You're a member of LNA, you've been a member of this body for much longer than I have.
Right, and in the past, resolutions have, I would say traditionally come to LNA, but I would not go so far as to say always, which is why I asked the question of the Chair. Here's my thoughts on that in discussion, since the governor has publicly stated and indicated that he is every intention of vetoing this existing budget as it's presented, and it's been suggested to me in the past by the Chair that if I'm going to vote no on something, I better have an alternative. So in that vein, I have an alternative that I would hand out to you if you could. My feeling is that I, rather than support this budget as it is now, that we should encourage the legislature to continue discussions and continue to work. They have made some good progress, but we want to, I would urge them to continue that. So I have this, which takes the original resolution. And puts different thoughts on it with the emphasis not being supporting this budget, but get back together, continue to work, if you lock yourself in a room, and not be allowed out, whatever. That's the direction that I would like to see us go beyond the procedures of how we got here, the original resolution. So I, if I may, put this in the form of a motion to amend the agenda.
You may.
So note...
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Carlton. You're welcome to start the discussion since you made the motion to amend.
Right, well, as you read through it, there are some things that, excuse me, that we wholeheartedly agree with, delays and unmet deadlines and certainly forms of uncertainty, but would very much like our direction from the town of Monroe is to continue to work. Don't stop now, we're getting close, rather than, okay, it's not great, but we'll accept what we have now. So, and I would propose this as a good alternative, still indicating that the town of Monroe is interested in the bipartisanship and wanting these people to work together.
You okay?
If I may, I'm fine.
Anything further?
I don't believe so.
I have a few questions. Did anybody on council not receive our amended agenda and/or resolution on Friday?
No.
Okay. And just retorting your same question, who authored this resolution as it's not signed? This amended a resolution as it's not signed?
Well, that would be me, working in collaboration with my colleagues, but since the first one wasn't signed, I didn't think the second one had to be.
But you still felt the question necessary?
I wanted to know if I'd done it right.
Okay. And when did you draft this proposed amended resolution?
After the amended agenda came to us.
So that would have been plenty of time for you to make a suggestion to me as Chairman that we add this to LNA's agenda since it would have been timely in LNA's meeting this evening, correct?
The timing certainly would have been, okay. Does this question thing go only my way?
I think you started it, so I think I'm entitled to a few questions.
Okay, I'm good with that.
And I didn't authored the resolution, and you did, so I think it's appropriate for me to ask the questions of you.
Okay.
So you suggested that LNA should have, this should have been before LNA for discussion. You've been a member of Town Council for a number of years, and you also a member of LNA, but you did not think it was appropriate on Friday after drafting this resolution to suggest that it's still before LNA, correct?
No, actually, my question, my initial question to you was, I'm not sure, what was your opinion? Should the original have gone to LNA, and since it did not...
I don't think that was a question, I think you read a statement.
Perhaps it would have been difficult to even get on the agenda since it came in Friday, but...
Fair enough. Any discussion with, the motion before us is authored, proposed amendment to the resolution presented.
I would like to comment.
I'm sorry, our clerk has a question.
One question.
Yes.
You never made a resolution or voted on the first motion and a second. Now you've got another motion.
Right, so the process, we vote, there was a vote and a second on the first motion, and then...
Right, and you had a discussion, and now you've got another motion.
Correct, and then, right, so the motion is to amend the original resolution, so this discussion needs to take place when that closes.
Gotcha, thank you, just...
No, you're welcome. Good question. That's actually a good question.
Yes, it is.
You keep us on our toes. We don't always follow the, sometimes we'll catch us.
We like to think we do.
Yes, we'd like to think we do.
Can I ask?
Yes, please.
We have Mrs. Strudinsky here, I'm just putting him on the spot. Can he read this and just give us his, is that germane at all in saying no?
I think it's not germane right now. I think Mr. Strudinsky should have the opportunity to comment if he wished, but I don't think it's appropriate during this amended motion right now. I would like all members of council to have their ability to comment.
Okay, fair enough.
Maybe we can have Mr. Strudinsky update us on the process and the details as he knows. But any further comments to the amendment, Mr. Hansberger?
While I agree with the fact that we should be extremely concerned with what is lost or what is proposed to be lost and what is not proposed to be lost in the current budget, what I'm concerned about is that the governor has indicated that he will veto it, and as a result of vetoing it, the matter is dead on arrival. What this resolution is calling for, the amendment is calling for, is for us to go on the record and supporting the fact that everyone should get into the room, everyone should essentially lock themselves in a room, and not come out until the negotiations have concluded with a budget that can be reached and can be signed by the governor. I am not in favor of losing a penny to Monroe, and my vote tonight is not on the governor's budget, on the Republican budget, on the Democratic budget. My vote simply is applying to the resolution calling for a statement from us that I think is inappropriate from the standpoint that the governor's already indicated he's vetoing the budget and regardless of what we say or do, will not change that. What should be looked at is the procedure that occurs thereafter, and their calling for those individuals who are mandated to come up with a budget, that they do it in a bipartisan way, stop the bickering, and I received a comment this afternoon to review the Hartford Currents editorial, and I thought it rather appropriate that at the very end they said we should get rid of the bipartisan, I'm sorry, the partisan politics, look at the issue, resolve the budget so that everyone in the state of Connecticut will benefit from it. So, again, I want to emphasize that my rejection of this would be based upon its appropriateness, not on the fundamental issue of what is gained or what is lost. not on the fundamental issue of what is gained or what is lost to the town of Monroe.
And just to clarify, what do you feel is inappropriate about the resolution?
I think because of the fact that it is dead on arrival, there is no impact whatsoever. I'm a little upset that public in Monroe did not get an opportunity to review or to express themselves on this issue. I don't know that everyone in the state of Connecticut is aware of all the ramifications of a thousand-page budget. I certainly was not given one to look at. While I went online, I found summaries. There are good parts in it, and operationally, there are some changes that are drastically needed by the state, impacts that will affect how we conduct business in Monroe, and how the other 168 municipalities will be governed, and what they do. I don't believe that we, as a town council, should be presenting this in its current form, for the amendment I do approve of.
Just a few questions, a few. Mr. Hansberger, you indicated that you would like to have had, quote unquote, the public to have an opportunity to review this and discuss this. What makes you believe that the public did not have an opportunity to do so, since it was made, this resolution, and the agenda was made public last Friday?
Well, first of all, you published the document that was the agenda originally. It was there, it was modified thereafter, which again, if someone were to go online, will say, okay, I've got the agenda, now there's a second agenda that I didn't know about, that is now out.
You're talking about between Thursday evening and Friday morning?
Between, anytime after the agenda being posted online.
Thursday evening and Friday morning.
And again, I think that the question is whether everyone in the town of Monroe agrees with this or not, we don't know. We send our budget to a referendum. I'm not suggesting that this go, could possibly go to a referendum, but again, I have not gotten a lot of input from the people that I've talked to on this, because there really is not a lot of information on what is the overall impact to Monroe or to the other communities in the state.
And the other comment I have, just regarding your comments, is, I was gonna phrase it as a question, but I'll phrase it as a comment. I find it unfortunate that you believe that a statement from the legislative body of the town of Monroe regarding a budget would have absolutely no impact, that disregards what we do on a daily basis here for the town of Monroe. And I think nothing can send a better message to Hartford than to have a statement from the town of Monroe's legislative body. I don't think, let me finish, please, I don't think that, I don't agree with you that just because the governor says he's gonna veto it, and he's been saying this for some time, and has not done so to date, that we should take that statement and have it cause inaction by this town. In fact, if I heard that from our representative Shredinsky, Senator Moore or Senator Kelly, they certainly, I don't think I'd be going out on a limb saying they would not be doing their job. In fact, I would venture to say that our state contingent probably hears similar statements on a daily, if not more frequent, basis, and I'm confident that they don't stop working when someone tells them, I'm not voting for your bill, I'm not voting for your budget, or I'm gonna do X, Y, and Z. I think that'd be irresponsible, I think it's irresponsible for this council to take that position, irresponsible of you to take that position, number one. And just furthermore, I do want to mention, and I'm not sure if council's aware of this, but I did have the opportunity to speak to our chairman of our Board of Education, Ms. Lane, our chairman of the Board of Finance, Mr. Manjos, our finance director, Mr. Bonavsky today, amongst others. All of them are unanimously in support of the budget, in support of the resolution that we presented, and furthermore, Ms. Lane went on to tell me that at their Board of Education meeting last week, which I think, were you in attendance at that meeting?
I was.
It was. It was. It was discussed that, ad nauseam, that all of the members of the Board of Education indicated on the record, there were two members missing, that they did write to the governor and did encourage the governor to sign the bipartisan legislative budget, and that support was from both Republicans and Democrats on the Board of Education. And I think first and foremost, we know that this proposed budget does restore funding flat over last year. To also know that the proposed Democratic budget did not, and we also know that the original proposed budget from Governor Malloy, I believe, and Representative Shredinsky can correct me, I think, took all of the money away, or most of the money away from the town of Monroe. So, both of those budgets would have a devastating impact on this town, without a doubt, and as a result of the, this bipartisan budget restoring fully the funding to our education system here in town, it has received the unanimous support of, according to Ms. Lane, the support of the Board of Education members that were present at that meeting, Mr. Manjos and Mr. Bonavsky. So, I will say that, and we'll continue the discussion of the amendment. Anything further, Mr. Pauls?
I would just say, any place I went in town, people asked about that budget when it first came out, how many months ago? Like, how could the governor be taking all that money away? You know, it was very hard to explain, and it'd be hard for anyone else to explain how all that money was being taken away from the Board of Ed, from the ECS, from every other opportunity. Just by walking around the big wire, stop and chop, people stopped me and asked, and I said, you know, gee, the governor did it, we did not know at the time, and now that we know, we have to find ways of trying to keep it up, you know, keep up some kind of education. You know, we have four schools of distinction in this town, which is just absolutely fantastic.
Anybody else?
If I may respond to your comments?
Sure.
I assume, when I said that there would be no impact, because the governor's gonna veto it, therefore, whatever we say, or 169 towns have to say, is not gonna have an impact unless you can assure me that the governor's going to sign it.
I can assure you, I can assure you that we will try.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How about we take some attention off the center chair? Yeah, I know, you're speaking up, so, all right, no, that's fine, so, you know, where to start? So, let's go on record, changes happen to a town council agenda all the time, so I want to make sure everybody understands. That is not uncommon for an agenda to go out Thursday night, and on Friday morning, changes. Let's just make sure that's extremely common.
Actually, I can...
I think there was an insinuation that that was kind of odd, and it's not odd. Two, you know, the comment around, the people in Monroe didn't get a chance to speak on this. I saw this resolution, and I, in my first, I can be quite reactionary sometimes, and, you know, I read it, and I'm like, I can't believe we have to do this, this is insane. And the more it sat on me Friday night, I was at a soccer game, and with a whole bunch of people in trouble. And I said, you know, your town doing something like this? And every single parent on my daughter's soccer team, there's about maybe 14, 15 of them, said, no, I wish we were, I'm gonna call hurts tomorrow. They thought this was great. I then immediately spoke to about 50 people, probably over 50 people, I started rifling through my contacts, shared with them, took snapshots of it, hey, can you read it, can you blow it up, email it to me. One actually said, is the governor, is he have a mansion, or hand deliver it to him? We'll take a ride up there, we'll do it tomorrow. Not one, and by the way, these are Democrats, independents, Republicans, not one of them got political over it. It absolutely was a one Monroe concept. It was not political. At the end of the day, you know, we talk about people speaking for this, they're gonna talk November 7th. We're gonna see what happens November 7th.
Which is precisely why you brought it up.
So, I could tell you right now, the, it's a bipartisan budget. It's sitting in front of our governor right now. He has not vetoed it. You are speaking in terms, Mr. Hansberger, of absolutes. I would be willing to entertain that resolution the day he vetoes it. He has not vetoed it. Your last comment, I find extremely interesting. It's going to do nothing. I'm looking at at least six people out there that have personally written, either emailed, or lettered the governor, or their state rep, or Mr. Kelly, right? And we influenced three people to come across the aisle, not we as Republicans, but citizens, across our state, did something unfounded, unfounded. I see no reason why this governor will not prove this. I'm gonna go on faith on this one, and I'm not really that faithful of a guy. So, at the end of the day, to sit here and say, a letter like that, can you imagine a governor getting 169, which would probably be 172, because seven towns aren't gonna go for it, 162 letters like that? That's awesome! That's awesome! This resolution does numerous things. It shows that we stand up for what we actually believe. We demonstrate Monroe will not be silent on paper. It shows and demonstrates we understand what this bill does. We understand it. It's not that just we agree with it, but there's a representative in the audience right now who has made it very clear, taken the time out of his busy schedule, to educate the people in Monroe, both Democrat and Republican and Independent, to assure we understand this bill. This resolution proves we understand it, and we put our name to it. See a lot of Facebook warriors out there, talking about being experts on this bill. They're not. We have to trust JP, we have to trust our other representatives, we have to trust the three Democrats that shot across the aisle and signed this thing. It is absolutely the best thing we've got in our hands right now, and I agree with you, going forward, I'm telling you right now, I believe these bills are unconstitutional. I believe this state has expanded its enumerated powers horribly, and I believe we have a representative who is going to fix that stuff. But to sit here and say we have no shot in stopping a governor when we never had a supposed shot of getting this budget signed, that is incredibly short-sighted. And there's a simple condition here, this is binary. You either are for it, or you're against it. It doesn't matter if you're blue, red, purple, it doesn't matter. You're either for it or against it, it's binary. A yes vote shows you represent the town, maintaining conservative principles you are standing for, for a direct result in Hartford. If you vote no, there's only two conditions. You are either agreeing with the governor's anticipated veto, not guaranteed, anticipated veto, or B, you don't agree with taking a stance as an elected official, and you wish the problem to go away. You wish this problem to go away, it's not gonna go away. We didn't wish the problem to go away at the legislative level. Guess what? Problem went away. We got a bill. We got a bill. How does that work? You write things like that, and you sign it. You put your signature on it, your signature on it, your signature on it, your signature on it, your signature on it. When this guy comes back his, mine, yours, and yours, and you should sign it too. That's how we stop it. I'm telling you right now, I'm not in favor of protests for protest sakes, seems to be a lot of that going on right now, but this directly affects us. Voting no on this would be derelict. It would mean that there's an alternative agenda in voting yes. Doing all we can as a council, representing the legislative department of our town, mandates we take a stance on this. And I'm gonna leave you with these comments. One simply does not have the luxury to vote no at this point, as an elected official. We cannot talk to people in town, I hear you talking, I hear you talking, we're all like, yeah, this bill is great. You can't say that to someone at Stop and Shut. You can't go on Facebook, demand this bill, get the bill, and not sign that. How does that work? How? This is not D and R and I and blue and purple and red. This is Monroe, and we have to stand for something. This amended resolution anticipates a veto that has not happened. At that point, I would be willing to entertain it. That stops him from vetoing it. That's why I'm signing it.
Through the chair, may I ask a question?
Please do.
So, it's your position at this time, that if this resolution goes through, and the governor were to veto it, that you would be willing to put forth our amendment as a new resolution upon the veto of the governor?
Did you ask the chairman or me?
Well, ask the question to the chair.
You could, Jesus, you would have corrected us on that, right? Look, this is not political, this is crazy.
I'm asking if you would...
I would absolutely be willing to entertain the next resolution, because this resolution talks as if he vetoed it. And at that, I'm not word for, I just, listen, Ms. Morton, I love you, I really do, but to sit there and interrogate Frank on not getting it, and then throw this, you point a finger, six more come back at you. But look, we did it, here's, it's in front of us now. Absolutely, I would look at this, maybe I wordsmith it, who knows, I'm not that great a writer, but I would absolutely, in its conditional construct, and its fundamental principle, I would absolutely entertain something like that going to the governor, if he vetoes it.
At this time...
At this time, absolutely not.
At this time, I think there's no more appropriate segue than to have Representative Shredinsky give us his comments in light of the proposed resolution, which talks about the willingness of the governor and the legislative leaders to continue to negotiate a compromise, and the encouragement on the amended resolution to continue bipartisan negotiations, quote unquote, around the clock if necessary. So, I think you're someone that could speak to this, Mr. Shredinsky, so, for yours?
Do you wanna see a copy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I haven't seen a copy of the amendment. I do get the, thank you very much, I do get the town council packets. So, although I may not be here with you physically on Monday nights anymore, I am here with you in spirit. So, thank you again for all of your, for your time. Thank you for inviting me. I know, it was fairly short notice, but, you know, I had a clear agenda tonight, so, and apologize for my voice, I am going through a little bit of a cold. Just to kind of discuss, kind of to go along with the discussion that's happening right now, to some of the point that, you know, it's inevitable that the governor's gonna veto it, I don't think that's the case, and the reason I don't think that's the case is because the governor put out a statement at 5:30, 6 o'clock on Friday night, after the Senate passed it. So, for anyone who doesn't know, the Senate is tied in 1818, Republicans and Democrats, three Democrats voted with the Republicans, passed the budget out of the Senate. So, at this point, you know, the speaker didn't have to call the budget. The speaker has the sole authority to call anything in the House of Representatives, and as you know, the speaker is a Democrat who didn't vote for the budget, but he saw fit to call the budget, the bipartisan budget at that time. It was a Republican proposal that became bipartisan. He called it because he wanted the will of the people to be had. And we had a very long discussion on it, and there were five Democrats in the House of Representatives who did vote for the bill. So, we're looking at a timeframe where the budget had passed the Senate, the governor pledged to veto it, he said, I'm vetoing that bill no matter what, but still, speaker called it, and still, Democrats from districts all over the state of Connecticut, Simsberry, Branford, Milford, voted for the budget. They weren't afraid that the governor's gonna veto it, they stood up for what they felt was right, and I felt was right, because I voted for it as well. So, I don't think that the governor's statement on Friday afternoon is a reason not to pass this resolution. To Councilman Reed's point, I think that this does send a message, and while we may be just one town out of 169, if there were 168 others that did this, I think it would be very powerful. And I know the governor is listening. He's been at press conferences, he's been talking about this issue, ever since the budget came out, it was passed. And to the point in here that talks about, you know, going back in the room and discussing and coming up with a bipartisan solution, we have one. We have a bipartisan solution. It wasn't unanimous, very few bills up in Hartford are. There is a bipartisan solution, where eight Democrats joined the Republicans, and they passed it, and one of the main reasons, let's not, you know, let's not avoid the elephant in the room, this is because municipal aid. There is a large municipal aid check that is supposed to go out on October 1st. And if this budget gets vetoed, or we have to go back to the drawing board, that's not gonna happen, and that's gonna cost towns and cities across the state of Connecticut millions of dollars, millions of dollars, real dollars. And while, excuse me, State Representative Lana Reed, in her speech, it was very, very good, I remember it, she said, I hate the Republican budget, and I hate the Democratic budget, and I hate the governor's budget even worse, but we have to make a decision. We're elected to make a decision. And she hears it loud and clear, I hear it loud and clear, there are people around the state of Connecticut that want this budget crisis to be over. And she knew that with five votes, six more, there could have been an end to this problem, and there was. And the House of Representatives voted, in concurrence with the Senate, passed the budget, and delivered to the governor's desk. I'm not naive, I anticipate the governor will veto it, but I have hope, I really do. I hope that he will come to his senses, and at the very least, say, you know what, this isn't perfect, I don't even like this budget, but you know what? We can fix it next year in session. We go back into session February, it's not that far away. We change things that happen to the budget all the time. We change things that happen to the budget all the time. Things aren't even dry in Hartford before we change them in bills. So if there's something that he really dislikes, whether it's the juvenile justice problem that he does, uh, the second chance society stuff, or whether it's something at UConn, we can change that, if the morning's there, of course. So, you know, he may just say, you know what? It's not worth it. Let me just sign the budget. Let me just not touch it. Let it become law. It becomes law. We move on. But I was sent with a message loud and clear from the citizens of this town and Newtown. They sat, I sat here in front of them, and they said, please, go to Hartford, reason with the governor, your appropriations. Do whatever you can to get Monroe's funding back. Don't let this happen. I did everything I could, and here we are. That's why I'm asking for your support in this resolution, and I'm hoping that the governor hears all of us loud and clear. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the amendment? That's why I'm here.
Um, do you, do you firmly believe that further negotiations would gain nothing positive?
At this point, um, as much as I'm hopeful at certain things, I find it hard to believe that the town of Monroe will benefit any more than we will in the budget that is before the governor right now. And the reason I say that is because, as we know, um, the governor has proposed zero funding for the town of Monroe.
The reality is it's not going back to zero.
We don't, we don't know that. In fact, if the budget doesn't pass and we run the state with executive orders between now and July 1st, I would almost guarantee you that Monroe will not see any education money between now and the end of the year. And that's just the, the plain fact of it. And it's, it's not just us, obviously. It's other towns as well that the state has deemed to be affluent. Um, I think it's wrong. I think it's misconstrued, but that's, that's reality. And then in the budget that was proposed, that was amended, um, the Democrat budget, while it wasn't as drastic as the governor's, did propose a $2.8 million cut in our education ECS formula. So while that's, you know, not great, it's not as bad as the governor's, but it's not as good as what we have sitting on the governor's desk. Um, if I had my way and he signed it, we would receive the same amount of funding as we did last year. Um, the town of Monroe can go back to doing some of the funding, um, some of the, uh, budgetary fiscal policies that they've set in place, and we wouldn't be able to prepare for the future. So do I think it would be better to go back in a room and discuss and negotiate further? I don't think it's gonna benefit the town of Monroe anymore. Hope that answered your question.
Anybody else? Mr. Huntsberger?
May we take a short recess?
Um, there's a motion on the table. I don't typically allow recesses after a motion is presented. So you may withdraw the motion and take a recess, or we can blow out a motion. The amended motion.
I'm sorry, do we have the motion on the, on the amendment?
Correct. And again, while we're in discussion, typically we don't recess, so. There's two motions presented. We have two.
I appreciate your courtesy.
Any further discussion on the amended motion? Mr. Kellid.
I just want to, uh, comment briefly because I think my colleague is very eloquent. Um, two points I want to mention. One is the amendment suggests that we encourage further discussion until agreement can be reached. And I believe, Mr. Shudinsky said this, but I want to emphasize that, we do have, that agreement has been reached. This amendment, I, I cannot support strictly because it, it asks for more discussion and more talking. And I have spoken to dozens of citizens in our community, and they are tired of waiting. They are tired of hearing silence from Hartford in regards to this. Everyone I've spoken to has said, what, when are we going to get a state budget? And when will Monroe be treated fairly? The time for talking is over. The time to send a message, I believe, is here. So for those reasons, I'll agree with Mr. Reed. Had, if we were in a different circumstance, that would be a different story. But where we are right now, the governor has a budget, and he has the ability to sign it, or allow it to become law. And I believe that we should send that message to Hartford.
Thank you, Mr. Kellid. Anybody else? All right. Um, I just want to, for the record, it's 8:56. I did check my email again. I have not received any further comments from Senator Moore or Senator Kelly. And again, it was short notice, so I'm not saying that in any type of negative light or fashion. Um, I just wanted to make sure that I was fully keeping the council informed. Uh, so with that, I'll call for a vote on the amended, uh, resolution. All those in favor? And against, that motion fails, three to five. Uh, back on the table is the proposed resolution. I think we've incorporated a lot of the discussion regarding the body of that resolution into the amended, uh, motion. However, following procedures, any further discussion regarding, um, the proposed resolution? Mr. Huntsberger?
I, I firmly believe that the governor is going to veto it, which will put us as a state, will put us as a town behind the eight ball even further. I've listened to our state rep. I've listened to your comments, Mr. Reed. The town of Monroe is not harmed by this to the degree that the previous issues were. And I firmly hope, um, that the anything that goes on further, um, as far as our budgets are and our money from the state, I, I, I hope we don't lose and that we're not put even further behind. I was firmly convinced to commit here tonight and vote no to this, not because of the the document itself or the, you know, the budget behind. I'm, I'm still very concerned about that. But given what has been said and especially my rep, um, I believe I've changed my mind. And I know that's a difficult thing for me to do. Um, because I know I'm gonna face quite a bit of opposition from the people that I know. Um, I firmly believe that this budget will not go through. And perhaps my position is the same as the senator from our state who voted in favor of the budget, knowing it would get vetoed. But, um, at least from Monroe's standpoint, I will have to go along with the fact that, as Mr. Reed said, it is a purple issue. And we do need money in town.
I just want to go on record. I didn't say it was a purple issue.
Any, any further discussion?
We started on the third thing. That's for October. No, you're, I would, I demand that gets put into the minutes. I go on record saying it's not a purple issue. It's not a political issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be voting in favor of this. I did vote in favor of this amendment. I will not be voting in favor of the original resolution because I don't feel that we're done talking yet. I understand all the impassioned comments. I take exception to some of them that abode. And the negative means basically like I care and you don't, or you care and I don't. That's not the issue, but I don't think that we walk away from negotiating at this point. And so that's, I will be voting against the original resolution. And I appreciate your courtesy and discussions even.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Anything further? Mr. Kellid?
I just wanted to say on the record that I, um, appreciate the discussion we had here tonight. Quite frankly, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit surprised. I did not expect this resolution to generate such divisive discussion. Um, I'm glad to see that we are, we're, I felt this was an issue that we as a town could come together and agree on. And, uh, I'm, I'm glad to hear that we are moving in that rate, in that direction. So I appreciate the discussion we've had, but I, I must say, I'm, I'm surprised that this is that difficult a decision to make. I, I think this is a clear message that we need to send to Hartford. So, thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Kellid for putting it together. It's mandatory.
Again, Mr. Kellid, I want to thank you.
I truly expect this to be a bipartisan, uh...
Thank you for your effort, Mr. Kellid. Uh, Mr. Shudinsky, I want to thank you for your input. I think he summarized the status of the, um, the budget, the only budget that's sitting on the governor's desk as far as it relates to the time Monroe does restore almost $7 million in funding. And there is no other budget that has done that, and in the opinion of our state representative, uh, I think it's a, it's a very well grounded opinion based upon what's out there. Any other budget is going to, uh, cause severe financial harm, uh, to the town of Monroe. Uh, so in that regard, I think this is a Monroe issue, as Mr. Reed put it. Uh, and, uh, I fully support, uh, this resolution. And I hope that, uh, not only does it send a message, um, for the, from the town of Monroe to Hartford, but that inspires other towns to do, uh, to take similar action, uh, so that we can move forward with not only, uh, ensuring that the well-being of our citizens is taken into consideration from an education standpoint, but all of us up here know that we've been tabling votes on millions of dollars of bonding for other essential services waiting for this budget. So the finality is going to help us move forward, not only regards education, but with regards to other issues as well. So I'm hopeful, as is our state representative, that this gets done. Uh, with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of this resolution? And against, that motion carries seven to one. There is no further business this evening on the agenda. We do have second public participation. Would any members of the public wish to participate in second public participation? Sorry, one moment. Mr. Rehn?
Apologize.
Mr. Rehn, please.
Thank you. For the record, this is my first second public participation.
Shall I remind you of the rules?
I may not have voted for it the first time, but I know it has to be germane to what you talked about tonight.
No, it has to be...
A new business.
It has to be a, an issue that is unresolved. So if there was a completed vote, then you may not speak on the matter at hand.
It's a gray area. It's a gray area. For the record, 280 Shelton Road in Monroe. So if you believe that the governor's gonna veto the budget, the budget's the unresolved issue. I would just like to invite you all to the Budget Forum on October 4th. Um, Senator Kelly and I are having the Budget Forum here. Um, again, we don't know what we're gonna be talking about. If we are in the timeframe we are now, where we're still waiting for the governor to act, it'll be a lively discussion on that. Um, if there's a veto that takes place, we'll discuss further steps. Uh, either way, we'll discuss the process and where Monroe landed. I encourage all of you to, um, to come, attend. If not, send me comments about it, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for attending. Second public participation remains open. Would anybody else like to participate?
I guess I have a question. Am I not allowed to say anything about new business? I thought it was new business or unfinished businesses. I'm still learning.
It, um, it is printed. The rules are printed on our agenda, and it, I'll read them for you.
No, no, that's okay.
It has to be an unresolved matter. So we do have a few unresolved matters this evening. Blaine, Chalk Hill, the fire study, or anything else that was said other than the resolution, you may do so.
Is it a gray area?
Or you could, you could consult with our state representative and find additional gray areas. You may, you may, you may speak freely.
My name's Theresa Oleyar.
Thank you for attending our council meeting.
T-H-E-R-E-S-A? 67? Passers walk.
We're merely trying to show off for our new clerk so that she knows how much of a stickler we are for the rules here.
I think she's a stickler for the rules. I love the child.
But I think she has a question about the cow. You might...
You have the floor. You have the floor, and we'll speak after. The cow?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, as with most times I decide to speak, it is when I don't plan on it. But, uh, I would like to thank the council for always bringing up Chalk Hill, because that's unfinished. And having a past Connecticut budget will help us in mothballing, so that'll be good. Uh, and I would like to thank the council also. I was thinking outside the box today. Uh, you talked a lot about what goes on in town during this budget season, and I would agree that many of my friends and neighbors have thought of any way possible short of knocking on Dan Malloy's door himself and begging him to notice Monroe. So I appreciate the outside box thinking, whether it was political or not political. I really don't know. So that's outside my scope. But I would thank you for doing what it takes. JP's up there through the night. We know that. We see the live videos. And so many people are staying up and writing letters and writing postcards. And so sometimes it takes a little outside of the box thinking, and sometimes it means not going along with certain people that maybe you normally agree with. Um, so I would thank you. And I would say that if we were brave enough to think outside the box more often, perhaps it would not have been such a brave decision for three Democrats to cross the aisle to have a bipartisan budget, that I think most people would think that that's probably how government should work most of the time. And I think that most people would agree that our town budget is a good example of that this past time, where we got it done, and I think a lot of people were brave enough to trust our elected officials and vote yes on a budget that they would normally always vote no, at least the first time around. So, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to participate in second public participation? Two people might be a record. All right, team, now, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Appel, second by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, eight to zero. Thank you very much. Good night.